Please turn off all cell phones and pagers at this time. We're going to start with the invocation by Colonel Lawrence, and then we're going to do the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States. For those who want to participate, you're more than welcome.
O's gracious and merciful Father, once again we come before you. We come, dear God, thanking you for both grace and mercy. We thank you for the weather that you have provided. As we look at this island and make plans for the future, we ask, Father, that you help us to make them comprehensively. Help us to be objective in our planning process. Help us to look at what's right and what is needed before making a decision. We also ask, dear God, that you be with us throughout the entire process. We ask that you respect, help us to respect our islanders in all that they have to say and all that they are doing. Be with them as well, and be with the Island Planning Commission. These blessings we ask in thy precious and sacred name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice.
I'm going to review the meeting's procedures. The Planning Commission hears requests for preliminary subdivision plots and site plans. The Planning Commission conducts public hearings on rezonings, certain planning documents and ordinance amendments. The Planning Commission makes final decisions on preliminary plots and site plans and makes recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on all other items. The planning staff presents the case to the Planning Commission during the staff report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and other applicable regulations. The applicant shall have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of the applicant to make a presentation on the request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Citizens desiring to speak in favor or in opposition to the request may then address the Planning Commission. Group shall select a spokesperson who may ask the group to stand to be recognized. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chair will ensure that each side has approximately equal time. Let's prove the minutes for February 16th, 2016. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I second it.
It's been motioned to approve the minutes for February 16th, 2016, by Debbie Watson, seconded by William Lawrence. All in favor? It's unanimous. Is there any request for postponed action, emergency additions, or changes of order of presentation?
As we discussed, it is at your option as to whether or not we take the two VP cases and dispose of them before the zoning case tonight. You have three items on there, which two are the village preservation one and one is the zoning case.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask a couple, two minutes at the end of the meeting, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to apologize to everyone in the audience. We're not trying to swipe you out. We're getting new energy system on, and I think we're working some of the bugs out of it right now. So, apparently, we found a bug. So, no, I think we're saving energy.
Okay, it is my decision that we review VP 3201-108 Fish Fever. Consider a request to construct a new single-family home. The site is located at 108 Fish Fever Lane, approximately 80 feet south of the intersection of Fish Fever Lane and Mayo Street. Parcel ID 04-14843. Ed Mecicella, agent for J.S. Adair, applicant and owner. Staff, yes. Do we know that Ms. Watson is refusing herself on this item? Staff?
Good evening, Commissioners. Carl Borassa, planner with Glen County, going to be presenting the Fish Fever project to you folks tonight. VP 3201 is a proposed single-family residence at 108 Fish Fever Lane. You're seeing this because the property is located in the Village Preservation District on St. Simon's Island, just south of the corner of Mayo and Fish Fever. The applicant is proposed, next slide, please, thank you. Here's an area of the property. You can see the property is outlined in red.
Somebody made me turn off the lights for a second.
Lights?
Yeah. On the other side.
On the other side.
Behind them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. The property is located in the rectangle outlined in red, and it is a single-family property. It is one individual lot that's part of a larger group of lots that has been combined together for tax purposes. Next slide, please. This is a conceptual plan of the site plan of the property with the trees that are proposed to be removed in the front. You'll see there are three cherry trees. It's cut up, the legend is cut off there, but there are three cherry trees that are proposed to be removed for access to the property off of Fish Fever. Next slide, please. This is a picture of Mayo, this is looking south on Fish Fever from Mayo. You'll see where the gray area is pointing. That is the fence line of the property. Next slide, please. This is a better look at the property head-on there. And again, the trees to be removed are right along the fence line, immediately along the fence line. There are some additional trees in front right there that the applicant would like to speak with you at length about once he has a chance to speak. Next, please. This is a picture of the property. As I said, this was combined for tax purposes. The lot that you will be, that they're requesting action on is just to the north of those two structures right there. It's the vacant piece of land immediately there. Next, please. This is another shot looking from due north. And again, the large oak tree cluster right there was the oak tree cluster that is proposed to remain on the site plan. And again, the area that they will be constructing the house would be toward the fence line in the back there. Next, please. And again, VP 3201 is to consider this request by Mr. and Mrs. Adair through Mr. Mecall, their agent, to construct a single-family property. It will be split, the property will be split off from the property as it is currently situated. And the preliminary construction, after staff has reviewed it, staff believes that this is in compliance with all measures of the village preservation. And the new construction will be required to meet all setback and height restrictions as set forth in Glen County zoning ordinance. This is a proposed site plan. The house. Here again is the elevation. They will have, the applicant will be required to meet the Glen County height regulations. They cannot exceed 35 feet from the flood zone. The flood zone line you'll see goes just beneath the porch. Next, please. This is the rear elevation here. And these are the side elevations of the property. Staff does believe that the submitted application for the designer view of a proposed single-family dwelling meets and meets all of the necessary requirements. And here are the possible actions that you may take. You can approve, approve with conditions, defer, or deny the application. And here are your possible motions, and I will be happy to answer any questions from you folks.
Are there any questions of staff?
Mr. Willis? I'm sorry, that's the way it's going. You want? All right.
Someone like to make a motion?
The applicant is here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Applicant, you'd like to speak, please? Take the podium.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ed Mecalla, and the contractor. And this is another one of my cottages that I've built many in the village area for 40 years now. And the only question I have is those three water oaks that are about 14 inches wide that there was a picture of, do you ask permission to remove them, which are in the easement? They are not on the property. But it would give more access to the property if I could remove them while we remove the other wild cherry trees.
I've got a quick. Mr. Mecalla, I agree that water oaks should be removed. Is there any way staff could certify that those trees are water oaks before any action's taken?
Staff would recommend that the Planning Commission not take action on that request, that refer that request to the tree committee.
That's good.
Are those, those trees are in a right-of-way or an easement?
They're in an easement.
The tree committee has jurisdiction over them.
Right. They're in an easement. I put the road in many years ago, and I built the two houses next door. The main house is on 12th Street. And I had another house next door on 12th Street, and there were two lots in the back, which I built many years ago. And I actually cut the road in there. It's a dirt road, and it's an easement to the property. It's not a county road right there. So I just asked for permission to cut the three 14-inch water oaks. As you can see in the pictures, they stick out in the dirt road, which is fairly narrow to be able to back out of the property or to do the parking right there. There is another 64 lot next door to this lot that I'm asking to build on tonight, which is a lot of record, which we're planning on designing another house, another cottage to be built at a later date.
Mr. Mecalla, from what you're saying then, that Fish Fever Lane is really not a dedicated right-of-way?
No, it's a dirt road, and I put it in about 16 years ago. I cut the road right there in there.
It wasn't, it was never.
And I named the road, I named the road for sure after our boat.
Mr. Haley, do you?
That's why I pulled this slide up. It shows us being within county right-of-way maintenance. I'm gonna.
There's no maintenance.
It's on his head that it's under our jurisdiction.
I think, Mr. Mecalla, what you did was you cleared, you cleared an existing right-of-way, and the county allowed you to do it, but that doesn't mean that it's not a right-of-way, even though you.
That's fine.
Yeah. So I think, I think from Mr. Haley's point of view, then you don't have jurisdiction over a right-of-way. That does go to the tree board.
Okay. So do I need to reapply for those trees or something, or what do I need to do for that?
The tree board, the tree board would review that. You've got a good case because it appears that at least one of them, or perhaps two of them, is in your driveway.
Yeah.
And certainly, they would understand that you would have access. So I think there would be a good, a good case for them to allow removal. Now whether or not they're gonna allow you to take all three of them would be a question.
Would the owner consider replacing the trees with something on the property? You don't have a very good record for cutting trees down. Would the owner agree to replace the trees that he's cutting down?
I do for removing trees, sir.
Pardon?
I do for removing trees on the island, sir.
What I ask is will the owner agree to, of course, if we don't have jurisdiction, I can.
I'm not cutting any live oak trees or anything down. But regards to your statement, I know you're saying to me, I said, I did replace oak trees on the island.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions of the applicant?
So I need to reapply for the, to remove those other tree with the, with the tree board, right?
Yes, sir, and I see at least one member, if not more members of the tree commitment board hears tonight, so they've heard your presentation, so they'll be anticipating getting that to them.
So I just file some kind of application for removing some trees?
We'll get a call in the morning, but it's, it's through, through the Public Works Department handles that.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Humphries.
Thank you. Thank you.
I move to approve village preservation application VP 3201. Second.
Yeah, I did.
She did?
Um, Mr. Humphries made a motion to approve VP 3201, seconded by Mr. Willis. All in favor? Pose, all in favor is what, one?
Is it unanimous?
Unanimous.
I have six.
So VP 30, VP 3201, is unanimous vote? One exception?
Yeah, one exception.
Right. Okay, now we're gonna review VP 3205, 413 Kingsway. Consider a request to construct a new single-family home. The site is located at 413 Kingsway, approximately 90 feet north of the intersection of Kingsway and Ocean Boulevard. Parcel ID 04-14703. Wayne Moxley, agent for Solid Rock Company, applicant and owner. Staff?
Good evening, Commissioners. Carl Borassa again to present VP 3205. This is a proposed single-family residence, also in the Village Preservation District, 413 Kingsway. It is a vacant lot. It is about, it is roughly 30 feet north of the intersection, oh, sorry, that should be 40 feet north of the intersection of Kingsway and Ocean Boulevard. The applicant is Mr. Wayne Moxley and Solid Rock Holding Company. The, here's a picture of the proposed house, excuse me. And the lot is, the lot is directly on Kingsway, and it is, they're looking at a 2,600 square foot footprint. Next slide, please. This is the property looking head-on north from Kingsway. Next slide, please. This is northwest, again, straight off of Kingsway, and you can see a couple of the trees that will be, that they will be asking to remove, to put the house up. This is from the rear of the property, looking south to Kingsway. VP 3205 is a request for a new single-family residence to be constructed in the Village Preservation area at 413 Kingsway. The proposed single-family construction, based on staff's review of their proposed plans, will meet the requirements of the Village Preservation overlay. The new construction will be required to meet all the requirements of Glen County zoning ordinance, including setbacks and height. This is a proposed elevation of the property, of the project, excuse me. Here's the rear of the home as it would look. And here are the proposed side elevations. Again, VP 3205 is the request to put the, put the single-family home on this property, and staff believes that the submitted application meets the requirements, the designer view. And here are your actions. Again, you can approve the project as presented, approve it with conditions, or action or Here are the possible motions, and I will answer any questions I can.
I want to ask questions of staff?
Yes, ma'am.
It appears that this structure is over the property line, is that correct?
No, ma'am, that's the setback lines that you're seeing right there.
Very well.
If you put the map back up.
Put the lights back on.
Yeah, you can clearly see.
Will you turn the lights on, please?
Yep. The lights are, the lines are very faint, Ms. Watson. You can see the line you're seeing is the building envelope, and Glen County regulations do allow the applicant to encroach into the setback with the eaves of the home up to 18 inches. And after scaling, yeah, and after scaling out the project, it, they have, they do meet the requirements. They do not exceed the 18-inch maximum encroaching.
Carl, on the, on the other side, you see, I guess that's the driveway?
Yes, sir.
So that line.
The applicant actually would like, would like to speak with you about that. They, they realize that this was an error on their part, and they have, they have a revised drawing that shows a head-on driveway.
Okay.
And I have one more comment for staff. It appears that one of, one of the trees, like Mr. Mecalla, is, is in the right-of-way.
That they're asking, yeah, and that's, that's something that's going to be remedied by their, by their proposal, to revise, to add just a single driveway.
Do you have a copy that you could?
The applicant does, ma'am. The applicant would.
You don't have one?
Ma'am, not on my person.
I do have a few copies. I can pass those out. My name is Kevin Higgins, by the way. I'm the architect. Mr. Moxley is here in the back.
Any more questions of staff? No more questions of staff? The applicant would ask that you run. The applicant, please step up to the podium.
I'm the architect, acting on behalf of Wayne Moxley, the owner. As you can see, the revised driveway plan is, after subsequent meetings with the owner, we decided to, because of mainly that tree you see on the top left of the slide in the right-of-way to save that tree, we opted as an option to bring a driveway straight in to the garage. That would save two of the live oaks on the property. So we also have color swatches here of the house, if you need to see those too. And any other questions, please let me know.
Questions of applicant?
Is there any plans to replace the trees that you're cutting down with new trees and new planning?
We'll, we'll do what we need to do. And I guess, I'm assuming we'll have to go through the tree board also, is that correct?
Not if you're cutting any trees in the right-of-way, no.
Okay, not just in the right-of-way, okay.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
You're taking down five, six live oaks, I think. Aren't you, five?
No, four.
There'd be four live oaks and.
Five.
I just recommend that the owner, if you can plant some live oaks back to replace those, I think the public would be very well pleased with that effort on your part. Can't make you do it, I don't think, but urge you to do it.
More questions of applicant? Anyone in the audience like to ask a question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I move to approve subject to the owner's planning live oaks to replace the trees he's cutting down.
I don't think we can do that.
One of your options is, is approve it with conditions. We don't, they are not subject to the tree ordinance as currently written, so.
I've indicated a long.
I would suggest that planting four, four back on the site might be a little much. There's already one, two, three, four, five, six that are on the site currently. That's, that's quite a number of trees. One, perhaps two would be in order, but four would be a little, a little too many considering the size of the house.
Can we, can we report to the staff?
Three, four trees? Three or four?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, Wayne's good, yeah, well, yeah.
I'll make my motion.
All right, Mr. Humphries, do you make your motion again, please?
I move to approve village preservation application VP 3205, subject to the condition that the owner replace at least three of the trees that he removed.
Mr. Humphries has made a motion to approve the village preservation application VP 3205, subject to the following conditions, that he replace three tree, three live oak trees. Is there a second?
I've got, I've got it. Are we in discussion?
There hasn't been a discussion yet, amended second yet, no. There has not been, so.
You're mistaken. My second. Thank you. Mr. Humphries is, is it, do they have to use live oak trees, or can they use maybe myrtles as well, or maybe some different species of trees, just to mix it up? We've got live oaks. I don't know, seems like maybe give a little latitude as to species, at least on a couple of them. Just a question.
I have no idea.
Well, that's a good answer. Well, let's just leave it like it is.
Well, you've got.
Just trees.
Yeah.
Just trees.
Just trees.
Just trees.
So you want to amend the motion?
Major canopy trees.
Three major canopy trees, that's what I was gonna say. Replace, I know that's what he's removing.
Replace, three major canopy trees.
I'm sorry, can y'all clarify this motion, because it's.
Yeah, it is changing. So, all right, we need to vote on the first motion, not that, no.
I amend my motion to not specify live oaks, but what did I say?
Three major canopy trees.
Three major canopy trees.
And I accept that.
Mr. Humphries has amended his motion to, to include three canopy trees.
I accept that.
It was seconded by Mr. Willis. All in favor? It's unanimous. We're going to hear VM 3126, the Lucas Building. Consider a request to rezone Lot 4 of Sea Marsh Professional Site from OC Office Commercial to PD Plan Development. This lot is located at 301 Sea Island Road, approximately 900 feet east of its intersection with Frederica Road. Parcel ID 04-14404. Austin Katz with Katz &amp; Brooks LLC, agent for Lucas Properties Holding LLC.
Casey Degenhart, planner for this case. As you can see on the map on, on the screen, the outlined red parcel is the parcel that we are talking about this evening, 301 Sea Island Road, otherwise known as the Lucas Building. Here's the front of the building. Here is a front side view of the building, looking west. Here is a photo of the rear of the building, also looking west. A photo of the rear of the building when you're standing in the lane behind all of the buildings. Tonight, the applicant would like you to consider a request to rezone Lot 4 of Sea Marsh Professional Site from OC Office Commercial to PD Plan Development. The slot is located at 301 Sea Island Road, approximately 900 feet east of its intersection with Frederica Road. The PD text also reduces the required parking spaces from one space per 200 square feet of office space to one space per 300 square feet of office space. The proposed PD text will limit use of the building to insurance agency, office uses that do not include storage, sale, rental, or servicing of goods on the premises, and real estate. The proposed site plan is up on the screen for you to view. The proposed landscape plan. On February 8th, 2016, Paul Andrews, county engineer, engineer, performed a site visit during a light rainstorm. He sent the following information to Mr. Haley on the night. All pipes appeared open and water was flowing in each. I don't know how much water backs up in the system when it rains hard. It might be enough to back water out of the system and into the residential area. However, if this were the case, I would assume the, I would assume that it would drain down quickly. He also said, I did note that there was not an inlet located at the bottom of the easternmost scallop along the fence line. This area may trap water at the fence line, and if there's a similar depression. This area may trap water at the fence line, and if there's a similar depression on the other side of the fence, there will be a low wet area." The possible actions you may take tonight are move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval, move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval with conditions, move to the Board, move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners denial, or a move to defer the application. Last time we, last time you all ruled on this, you did mention that you wanted the word "storage" removed from the text as a permitted accessory use for the property. So, I did include that in the second motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval with the resuming application with the following conditions, just, just so you all have that information up there. And of course, it's your decision whether you want to continue along that line or establish different conditions. And these are your possible motions listed. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Questions of staff? Applicant, take the podium, please.
Thank you, madam chair and members. We were here on January the 19th. Though there was an issue about notice, I think there was about the same size crowd then, in any event, there's no issue about notice. And the results of the last meeting was that you voted to grant the application, but required that the applicant address a drainage problem. And that has been done. There have been two occasions when things were brought to Mr. Lucas's attention. One was a concern about the buses that take people back and forth to the community church, and they had been parking with permission in the parking area and were driving down the road and back, and that disturbed a neighbor. And as soon as Mr. Lucas was made aware of that concern, he revoked the permission and those folks had moved to another location. The second point is that when the issue of drainage was brought to his attention, he reacted very promptly, engaged Mr. Roberts, who has done an investigation and will be prepared to report to you in a moment. I do want to say respectfully that we have gotten some rather massive submissions from Mr. Lucas's tenant, or her counsel, the Stuttering Foundation, which have come to us on the eve of this hearing, and we've really not had the opportunity to review every line. But the point of those, and you've, I believe you've been favored with copies, the point of those has very much to do with complaints about actions of prior owners or tenants years ago, and really very little to do with Mr. Lucas and his management of this building. So, we have sharp disagreements with, being frank, with one of the tenants. We have a number of tenants who are seeking additional space, some of whom are here this evening. Mr. Lucas will introduce them. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Lucas to address it.
Thank you, madam chair, and thank you, fellow commissioners, for having us here again. We were here in January, as Mr. Katz mentioned. The purpose of us expanding our building, the 301 Sea Island Road, is to simply satisfy clients who want to expand. And I think all of them are here tonight. We have four tenants that are here tonight who've indicated they want to expand. And maybe, you all stand up if you would, real quickly. We have a CPA firm, we have a charitable nonprofit organization, we have a civil engineering firm, and we have a private investor business consultant. Thank you very much for standing. The civil engineering firm is a pretty interesting example. They, the owner came to us three years ago and leased an office, small office. Since that time, he's hired five associates, he's now up to six. He's indicated now he wants to hire two more people. And of course, we're out of space. The building is totally filled up. So, we will accommodate our tenants, and I think it's good for this island, good for our community, to have modest planned growth where you can have vibrant businesses in your building. Three of the four of these tenants are incubator firms. When they came into our space, they were really starting their business. And it's exciting for me to watch them grow from a one-person operation to where they're hiring associates, hiring a lot of young people, hiring all kinds of people. But it gives a certain vibrancy to our community to have this growing. One of the issues that was raised was the parking, and obviously, I'm going to address that. We did a study last year from February through September, and we did it Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM, 1:00 o'clock, and 4:00 o'clock, three times a day. And we counted cars, we went through the whole complex, and we counted cars. And we averaged during this period of time, it was four cars during this period. It was about an eight or nine month period. And of course, which is our busy season, was included during the survey. The counting has confirmed that we have 195 parking places in our complex. So, we're using about a third of the capacity of this complex. And if you, and I don't think anybody's ever come to this complex who couldn't find a parking place. There's always plenty of parking. Another issue, of course, is trees. The area that we want to expand is behind the building, and most of the trees back there, we planted. We planted after we moved in. And we plan to take those trees and relocate them, and of course, our architect will show you a tree plan. Most of the trees are still immature trees, but we will relocate those trees. You know, we love trees, we don't want to do anything with the trees we planted, except relocate them and use them as buffers. The next issue is obviously the drainage issue, and we have our consulting engineer that we've hired to review those issues which would be affected by our expansion. And after I finish, I'm going to ask him to come up and give his report from his inspections. The final thing I want to say is, my firm purchased this building in August 2011. And I don't know if anybody remembers this, but this building was a shell. It had a dirt floor, it had rafters, it was paved with oil, it had inspects, and not much economic activity was going on. We built off the building, we built it out to high standards, and over a period of time, we leased out the space. And I'm proud of that. And I think it's good for this community to have planned, respectful, modest growth, particularly in an office complex, where you can have incubator companies grow and take advantage and be a part of this community. You know, if you think about it, if we shut down this kind of growth, this would be an old folks' community, guys like me. And that's not very vibrant. You need young people, you need business activity, you need vitality. And everything we do, we try to do first class. That's what we are as an organization, we're very environmentally friendly. In every building we've bought on this island, which has been five, we've taken buildings that were usually abandoned, no economic activity, paying very little tax dollars, and we've turned them into buildings that are vibrant now and are good tax-paying operations for this community. And I think that's a good thing overall. So, I hope as you consider this, you will approve our application. And now, I'd like to ask our civil engineering consultant, Jonathan Roberts, to come up and talk about the drainage issue.
Madam chair, commissioners, I'm Jonathan Roberts with Roberts Civil Engineering. And after the January IPC, we were asked to help investigate some of the drainage issues. At that meeting, Mr. Rogers spoke about some issues on his property and also his father-in-law that are in the Black Bank subdivision just north of the property. And to begin, I'd like to take a few minutes just to describe the existing system, so you guys have an understanding of kind of the technical layout of the system. So, this is the existing Lucas Building. He wants to expand in the back. There is a drainage system that is on the north side that collects basically everything from SunTrust and takes it all the way down and out to a ditch that flows into the marsh. That was built in the early 90s when SunTrust was bid in place. In the mid 2000s, this complex was built, and Thompson Hutton did a design to add a supplemental drainage system that we're going to call the south drainage system. That was shown in orange, and that's on the front portion of the building. They're two totally separate systems, they do not connect. They do have an outfall that ultimately, they both go to the marsh, so they aren't connected downstream, but they're not physically connected on the site anywhere. So, that's important to understand as we're going through this drainage discussion. When Mr. Rogers was talking about his concern, his lot is here in Black Banks, just to the north, and his father-in-law is here, both north of the law that divides the commercial property from the residential property. The original Thompson Hutton plans in 2006 showed three pipes from the SunTrust development that were stubbed out onto these properties. So, as we started looking, as Mr. Lucas was very emphatic about, you know, help come up with a solution, we were looking for a solution, we want to find a solution, we want to help our neighbors. The first thing that we wanted to find out is, are these indeed functional and are they in place? So, I talked to the county engineer, and he and I went to the site. We went for two purposes. We went to look to make sure these outfalls were clean. We thought there may be some clogs in the outfalls, that would certainly lead to some drainage problems. But we also thought that these may have gotten covered, or maybe they didn't exist, or you know, maybe the survey was inaccurate at the time. So, we wanted to make sure that these three pipes were in existence so that they could catch water from Quebeca, from Rogers, and Olson. Quebeca didn't have formal complaints in the last meeting, but since they had a similar pipe situation, we wanted to look at that anyway. So, we set up a meeting with Mr. Rogers, and we got permission from Quebeca and Mr. Olson to go to their properties. The county engineer and I looked at Quebeca first, the pipe was in place, it appeared to be functioning. It looked like it may have some title back up based on some evidence, but overall, it was there, it was available. Mr. Rogers was actually not available that day, so we didn't go on his property that day, but then we did go to Mr. Olson's, and we couldn't find this pipe whatsoever. It was nowhere to be found. So, the county engineer and I thought, maybe, you know, that could be a culprit for this issue. A couple of weeks later, an associate of mine and I arranged a meeting with Mr. Rogers and looked at his pipe. And he took us back, he's very nice, he showed us the pipe, it was available. He said that it had flooded terribly a few years ago, and he took it on himself to unclog that pipe. And after he unclogged that pipe, said since then, he hasn't had problems, except occasionally on a spring tide, water would flow back out of this pipe into his yard. Not really a problem, but it was something that's visible. Then we went and looked at his father-in-law's property, and he explained, you know, that's probably the bigger concern. We couldn't find that pipe again, and he suggested that we get a TV inspection company to come from this side where we've got inlets that were known, the Lucas side of the wall, to put the TV in the pipe and to go on to Olson's property until we suspected to find the catch basin. We did that, and indeed, there was a catch basin that was covered over, that was about 25 feet into the Olson property. At the time, Mr. Rogers thought that that may be a viable solution to help solve Mr. Olson's condition. Can we go to the next page, David? So, this is that inlet that was on Mr. Olson's property. It's, you can see the outline of it here, this is basically the TV to this point so that we knew about where to go start digging. We got permission from Mr. Rogers and Mr. Olson to go uncover it. And then go to the next slide? That's with the leaves removed, and then go to one more. And then that's the open pipe, that's the open catch basin with the cover removed. Initially, we thought that this may be the smoking gun. This has been covered. Now that it's uncovered, it may be a good opportunity to connect the drainage and solve Mr. Olson's problem. But Mr. Olson was very nice about meeting with me and kind of explaining the situation. And the more I learned, the more I realized that this isn't the only problem. There's a network of pipes. Let's go back to the first page, there's a network of pipes all over his backyard and from his patio that connects into that system. He admitted that hasn't been maintained, so that would certainly be something that we would recommend. We did confirm from the catch basin to Mr. Lucas's property, it's clean, it's available, it's ready. And so, now, we're looking at what can be done to help. You know, we're not interested in anything but how to improve the situation so that they have less severe problems, or, you know, hopefully no problems, but will be real, less severe problems as a result of this. So, we've got a recommendation for two things. First, I believe that putting a gate on this discharge pipe would help eliminate any of the high tides from coming into the system. A gate would prevent the flood tide from going back in and coming out of Quebeca, Rogers, and Olson, it just would eliminate it. You guys understand, as a spring tide comes up, if there's no mechanism to prevent that backflow, it will fill up pipes and it very easily could be coming out of those, since all have evidence and have spoken to that effect, and we believe that's probably true. I would recommend putting the gates on the downstream of this system to eliminate that. Furthermore, as the expansion, we would collect all of that water. Right now, see, the roof line is here, all the water from the middle of the roof back flows into this northern system. We're proposed on the addition to collect all of it with gutters and downs pumps for all of it, and pipe it to the south system. There would be less water on the north system as a result of this expansion than there is today. That would improve the situation. So, what we're recommending is a gate on the downstream system to eliminate any backflow, guttering all of this building to the south system so that there would be less water in the northern system that interacts with the residential property owner. We've talked very closely with Mr. Rogers and Mr. Olson about what would satisfy them, and Mr. Olson, you know, kept saying, you know, there's a lot of backflow, a lot of backflow. And on Friday, I finally asked, you know, what could Mr. Lucas do to solve your drainage concerns? And he mentioned that he had a mold proposal that he would like Mr. Lucas to take care of. Mr. Lucas did agree to do that, provided him a formal proposal of such on Monday. It had some stipulations, and they couldn't come to terms, but Mr. Lucas was willing even to do that, even though Mr. Lucas didn't solve the system. This was done in 2006, long before he ever considered doing the expansion. So, in summary, if we add a gate to prevent the backflow, and then we take all of this water from the roof and put it in the south system, it will improve their condition.
Is there a question? Who's responsible for that north line, the blue line?
The, my understanding is the responsibility is the entire complex, all the way down to the SunTrust.
Okay, but who would you coordinate with to put that gate in?
Mr. Lucas has offered just to take care of that as part of this project. So, we would suspect there would be no opposition to that. You're right, we would need to get permission from all the other owners to put that in. You know, it wouldn't impede any outflow, it would only impede the backflow, so I don't anticipate there to be any issue with getting their approval.
I have a question. With the projected increase of the 3463 square foot addition, what impact is that going to have on the drainage? Now, you're telling how it is as it is now, but what about the projection with the additional square footage?
The projection on the additional square footage would have to be shown to the county during the building permit phase to show that these pipes are adequate to handle it. And we would have to burden of doing that. And if they were not adequate, then we would have to upgrade them to the point where they were.
Okay, so that drainage will go to the south instead of to the north?
Correct, to lessen the total flow on the north system. That's the whole current point, to get less water into the north so that it is not worsening the Olson or Rogers condition, it's actually improving.
Any more questions of Mr. Rogers? Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Hi, I'm Larry Bryson, architect for Lucas Properties. Pretty much everything I've got to say, I said at the last meeting, and I do have a handout, it is the same hand- It is the same handout from that prior meeting, so let me screen that. If you wish, we can go through this sort of in detail, or I can kind of gloss through it quickly. We did that at the last meeting, so, or if you want to just ask me questions or clarification.
Larry, I've got one question. It was mentioned to us that the trees, the trees in the back were being moved to the front. Have you got a slide that shows where those are going to be relocated?
These trees, of course, some of those are palm trees and acorns. They're even with my glasses. These trees are the ones that we're talking about relocating, and our intent is actually mix some of those into this section and also into this buffer here. We may actually, there's an area or two here that's a little weak in landscaping, so we are going to enhance that as part of this overall landscape.
I have a question, Mr. Bryson. Relocating them to the fence line on the north side of the property, there doesn't seem to be much space for the root balls and root system.
Right. What we've discussed this, I also talk with landscape architects and landscapers, we would like to actually consider filling this area, raising the grade of it if it's agreeable, which would also allow that water to flow into this area here rather than those catch basins back there. We keep those active and raise them, but raise the grade so that it's not down in that slope, and it makes it easier to landscape that section.
Mr. Bryson, I'm going to ask this question because you are the architect. When you, the design of the addition, how would it impact the Studdering Foundation? Because I know that's a contentious issue. So how would it impact that tenant?
Well, first, it's a construction project, so there will be some impact, and of course, the contractor, Mr. Lucas, will try to investigate that as early as possible. The Studdering Foundation is this section here. It goes a little beyond that. Their entry door is here, and what we're creating is a porch for them. And can you go to another plan, Mr. Engle? I think it's the site plan that shows.
That's what I got.
Oh, okay. There is a door here that goes to the Studdering Foundation. So we'll try, we'll create a protective cover for that during construction. This will be a porch, so it'll be a porch precipitor for them. And then we're going to relocate these handicap parking around to this side, make these standard parking spaces, give them a handicap park with direct access into the Studdering Foundation, replacing this walkway, cutting the curb, and creating that ADA access. There is a window that we will convert to a door. That will be the last piece of work that will occur, and that'll give the Studdering Foundation and Lucas some clearance.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson.
Thank you.
Mr. Lucas, do you have anyone else to speak?
I'd like to have one of our tenants who is incubating his business there.
Would you mind going to the podium and saying your name, please?
No, no.
Can you spell your name, please?
Yes, my name is Vellum Lotes, and I'd like to make a few statements.
Speak for your last name.
Lotes, N-L-T-E-S. And so I've been a tenant at Lucas Properties for over three years, and I moved my family from Atlanta to start a business here, which is capital investment into real estate projects. And I'm trying to, I'm raising three children here, go to school in this community. And in the three years I've been here, I've never had a problem finding a parking spot in front of Lucas Properties. And I also find Mr. Lucas to be a solid operator of real estate. It's always clean. It's professionally managed, and I think he's a pillar of our community. So, and I want to add employees, and so I need more space. I endorse this reserving without reservation, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. All right, can we just wait to see what else is in favor? Anyone else in favor of the project would like to speak?
Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, my name is Mark Bednar. I have been a resident of Black Banks for 22 years. My first home was on Plantation Way, which you see on the map as the Quebeca residence, so I'm very familiar with the history of this site. I'm also a former tenant of Mr. Lucas, and I now own a home at 16 Black Banks Drive. As a neighbor and having gone through much of the history of this planning commission, I just want to let the Commission know that as a neighbor, I fully support what Vellum said, that Art is a great member of this community. He has shown in his development of dilapidated properties, one on Frederica Road near the Old Red Barn, and another on Frederica Road near, across from Coastal Bank. I've watched his effort in the community for five years, and I support his motion, or his request, I'm sorry, tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Lucas, would you please come to the podium? Someone would like to ask, one of the Commissioners would like to ask you a question. One of the Commissioners would like to ask you a question.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Dwight Plyler, and I live at 15 Boundary Lane. And the drainage from this property has never caused any problem. I live right on the main access channel for the water coming in or out. It's never come up very high. It's always drained perfectly. I was on the board when we granted Sea Island permission to come under our roads with this drainage, and it's always worked perfectly.
Would you say your name once again, please?
Dwight Plyler, P-L-Y-L-E-R.
Thank you.
Got a question. Mr. Lucas, how many tenants have their own private entrance and a dedicated parking place and a proposed porch? Other than the Studdering Foundation?
Well, there are two. There is a Miller Farm, a builder suit down on the other end, and the front of the building has its own private entrance. But everybody else goes through an entrance for the rest of the tenants. Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Lucas?
Which is where it works in most office buildings.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Lucas? Anyone? Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning? Those, anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm Frank Brown. I represent the Studdering Foundation. We've talked a little bit about it while this is up here. The Studdering Foundation rental space is right here. The proposed addition would be right there. The Studdering Foundation is not only a tenant in that location, it's the beneficiary of restrictions and easements for this entire property. There are easements and restrictions that govern this property, and the foundation is a beneficiary of those. We have a report that we've submitted from an appraiser that shows the negative impact of this addition on the Studdering Foundation's rental value. We have an affidavit from an architect that's, I don't know, 30, 40 paragraphs, that describes the negative impact of this addition on the foundation's space. We're not just making things up. We went to professionals to get their opinions. We'll talk a little bit about some ADA issues. There are substantial number of ADA issues that are caused, that are created by this proposal. There's been a suggestion that the foundation is the only one opposed to this. You're going to hear this evening from Mr. Rogers, who lives right behind this project. His father, Mr. Olson, 89, 90-year-old gentleman, is also opposed to it. So are the Mills, who live right down there, and last I heard, so was the owner of Lot Number Two on the Sea Marshes track. And we have a letter. Well, it's certainly correct that the last I heard, he was opposed. If something's changed, something's changed, but a letter was sent to the Board of Commissioners on February the 18th saying that he was opposed. There are many problems with this application. We've sent you letters. We've sent you reports, and we took the time to do that because we didn't want to just stand right here and spout off about what we thought personally. There's been some discussion about drainage, and you heard from Mr. Roberts. First time we've heard from Mr. Roberts was tonight. There was a complaint by Mr. Katz about, we got some reports on the eve of this meeting. Untrue. We sent this report back in February. This is an engineering report dealing with drainage issues. We gave Mr. Katz a copy of that. At that meeting, excuse me, at the meeting back in January, the one that was ultimately rescheduled for tonight, there were some other issues that came up. So we got another report that we presented to you. So tonight, when we're talking about drainage issues, we have two reports, probably 300 pages in total, and we have Mr. Roberts walking in the room tonight and telling you what These drainage issues are not issues to be punted to the permitting stage. That seems to be the game plan here, to convince you all to pass this, and then we'll let the permitting stage handle it. They're supposed to deal in the PD text, they're supposed to deal with information, provide information about the projected demands for drainage facilities. They didn't do that. In the zoning ordinance, the Island Planning Commission is supposed to consider, among other factors, the impact of a proposal on adjacent properties. And we're going to get to, if I may, Mr. Daganhart, if you can switch to the second slide that I've got. Mr. Roberts talked a little bit about this, but I want to emphasize it again. The drainage system here takes water from Frederica across SunTrust property, all the way across to the marsh, across four lots. What Mr. Lucas is talking about doing is dealing with one lot, the last one down here. And we're talking about guttering.
Mr. Brown, excuse me. Who are you representing tonight? Are you representing the Studdering Foundation?
Yes, sir.
And the whole neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Then I don't think the neighborhood has any bearing on what you're talking about with the Studdering Foundation.
We're bringing to your attention the drainage issue that we assume you want to hear.
We have heard about the drainage, but...
But you haven't heard our side.
Does it affect, is it affecting the Studdering Foundation, the drainage issue?
Yes, sir. As a member of the public, it's impacting them. And since we have two reports, sir, I assume you want to hear from us and not just from them.
Well, we've heard from you.
Well, you haven't. Last meeting, we weren't here, and you seem to be trying to cut me off tonight. May I?
Well, I'm asking the question, a valid question. Who do you represent? That's why I'm asking.
I said at the beginning, I represent the Studdering.
Okay, thank you.
Continue, please.
Both of these reports show that this system is over capacity right now. It's already over capacity. We didn't make that up. These reports show it, and they show where that's the case. It's called surcharged. Surcharged means you can't put more water in there. As Mr. Ken Rogers said when we were standing outside tonight, if you have an eight-ounce glass of water and it's full, you can't pour eight more ounces in there. That's what you have here. You have a system that's already over capacity. And what is the result of that? The result of that is that water is going from the system down the hill, you'll see there's a substantial grade, onto these lots. And what do our engineers say? Our engineers say that this was designed originally so that water came, water was supposed to come from these lots into the Sea Marshes track system. Instead, when there's a heavy rain or a high tide, it goes the opposite way. Water goes from the system, because it can't stay in the system, it goes into the yard. And you heard a quote from Mr. Andrews, who went out there to look at the property, and what he said is really interesting because what he ended up saying is, "I don't know how much water backs up into the system when it rains hard." He's saying the same thing we are. It might be enough to back water out of the system and into the residential area. And then he goes on to say, "However, if that were the case, I would assume that it would drain down quickly." Well, Mr. Rogers can tell you, it ain't draining down quickly. For days after it rains, he goes out there and he's sitting in muck. And both of these reports also say, if they really had considered all of the land in the Sea Marshes track, they didn't even consider some of it. If they considered all of it, this problem would be much worse than it is. There are negative grades in this system, and we've documented that and documented where they are. That means the pipe is flowing the wrong way. If you'll go to the next slide, please. This is, this is Mr. Olson's backyard. Mr. Rogers, who are you going to hear from? So this has been going on for nine years. And Mr. Roberts, when he was up here, said, "Oh, in 2007, 2008, they added a new system to the southern." Well, that's true. What he didn't mention is they raised the back of the property four or five feet, so there's now an elevation going down to the Sea Marshes track. He didn't mention that they raised manholes in 2007, 2008. Mr. Olson has mold all over his house, and he can tell you more about it. Eighty-nine, ninety-year-old guy. And by the way, Mr. Roberts said, well, they came out and made a nice proposal to Mr. Olson. What they did was give him the five-page release, a five-page release that Mr. Rogers has, if you want to see it. They released all his rights relating to this and relating to the zoning. And it was a confidential document. He wasn't supposed to tell anybody about it. And he wasn't, he was supposed to give up his right to oppose the rezoning. They didn't tell you about that. What Taylor Engineering says is there needs to be a major redesign of the system and major modifications to the system. And that until that happens, there should not be any new construction because you're just adding that eight ounces of water to a glass that's already full. There's also no water quality treatment equipment. But we found the agreement. The officers of Blackbanks didn't have it. We found the agreement. And it required filtering system, a filtering system for that northern system if it was feasible. And our engineer says in his report that it was plainly feasible. It ain't there. So all of this stormwater, dirty stormwater, is not being filtered before it goes, excuse me, before it goes into the marsh. That violates the Glen County Water Resource Protection Ordinance. They talked about putting buffer plantings, excuse me, plantings in the buffer. That's where part of the system is. You're talking about putting plants on top of the system. Anybody, I know Mr. Rogers can tell you about that. You don't do that. They talk about gutters. There's no, they proposed that they put gutters on the building. One building out of a five-property system. They're going to put gutters on one building and try to gutter some water toward the front. Their architect at the January nineteen meeting admitted it's a little bit of water that they can move toward the front. You're not moving, you're not doing, you're not putting gutters on the Sunthrust bank. You're not putting gutters on the other lots. It's a Band-Aid. The main point of this is there's already a problem there with drainage. We didn't make it up. We've got these reports. These are Chuck Wilson, who's an engineer in Atlanta, has a place down here. Been practicing for thirty-two years, I think he said. Snobble Engineering is an international engineering firm. Taylor Engineering out of Jacksonville prepared the other report. We didn't make this stuff up. We got people involved who know about this stuff, and they told us about it. These problems cannot be solved by Mr. Lucas. Even if Mr. Lucas wanted to, he can't do it by himself because these covenants require everybody to be involved in that and given permission. And Mr. Willis, you mentioned that, your assumption of that back in the January nineteen meeting, and you're absolutely correct. And we've got no evidence of their willingness to do that because it costs money. It's easy to go put some gutters up or send Mr. Roberts out there to do something with a pipe. But when you're having to spend major money, there's been no indication from any of these people that we know that they're willing to do it. Real quickly, the application is incomplete in numerous respects. The zoning ordinance is very clear. The application should be complete when it's provided to the planning department. It wasn't in numerous ways. Even after two months, when they said it was complete, it's still not complete. There's excessive site coverage. They defined site coverage in their application. And we got a, we hired, again, we didn't just make up the information. We hired a surveyor to analyze the site coverage. And he says it's not under seventy percent, as they claim. It's eighty-six percent. ADA violations. We hired an architect who's got forty-something years of experience. And he came up with a long list of ADA violations that exist in the architectural plan. The parking study. You know, we don't know what study was done. They say they went out and they checked for nine months. You know, you can get professionals to do that, but let's assume their study is correct. There are still very serious problems with the parking lot. We're talking about thirteen offices or cubicles, whatever you want to call them, in this addition. Under the zoning ordinance, under OC, excuse me, OC zoning, they would have to have eighteen new parking spaces. They're proposing no new parking spaces. Lot Three was rezoned just two years ago. Excuse me, three years ago now. And the same thing happened. It, it was changed from OC to PD with no new parking. So in the span of three years, you've got thirty-four lost spaces. If you look at what really is involved out there, though, you realize Lot Four is a still-over lot. And why do I say that? Because Lot Three has a, I want to get my number right here, a forty... Lot Three, right next door. Has a forty-space deficit. So where do those people park? They park on Lot Four. Why don't they park on Lot Two? Because Lot Two, under those declarations of easements, has thirty-two of the thirty-eight spaces for itself. So, yeah, it seems like, wow, there's all these, there are all these spaces on Lot Four, but they're not because people on Lot Three, forty of them, have to go over to Lot Four. We don't even have a building on Lot Three, oh, excuse me, on Lot One yet. There's no building there. The other issues, the other parking issues that we've been dealing with. Let me ask you to go to the next slide, Mr. Daganhart, if you would. This is another one of Mr. Olson's, you can see in his garage. This is the slope we're talking about. This is what they built up in 2007, 2008. It used to be like this. They built it all up. Obviously, water flows down there. Even Mr. Andrews mentioned that in his report. There was probably a low spot there. If you'd go to the next slide, please. And that's the same picture. You can see how steep it is there. And the next one, please. This is, this is part of why we're concerned about parking. This is a fire lane. And this is what happens all the time. There are people parked up there. This is a fire lane. It's now marked. Even though, talk about good faith. Even though the staff minutes, the fire chief and his staff minutes back in October said that the fire lane on Lot Four should be marked. And he explained how it should be marked. It ain't marked today. It's still not marked. So we have, if you go to the next slide, please.
Is, am I asking a question? Is that slide, is that behind Mr. Lucas's property?
No.
No, this is Lot Three.
Oh, that's Seattle's property?
Yes, sir. This is Lot Three. Let's go, let's go to the next one. And this is also Lot Three. For a year, this is the part, that's Seattle's lot. This is Lot Three.
That's Lot Three.
For a year, this thing sat in the fire lane.
Mr. Brown, you've given us a lot of information. May I ask you a question before you continue, please? Okay, what I'm trying to understand is that this building has been here for a while. And you're saying that Mr. Rogers and Mr. Olson had problems with this, with the drainage system and flooding in 2007 and 2008. However, Mr. Lucas said that he purchased the building in 2011. And was anything done before Mr. Lucas purchased the property to address the drainage issue? That's my one question. And number two, I need for you to condense exactly what you're against. You're against the parking. You're against not having enough ADA spaces and the drainage?
I'll try to, let me first try to answer your question. I don't know whether there was, Mr. Rogers would know. I don't know whether there was some effort on the part of somebody between 2007 and eight and 2011 when Mr. Lucas bought the property. I don't know if there was somebody who went out and did something. Obviously, nothing significant was done because the same situation exists. But Mr. Rogers can better explain that. In summary, and I appreciate you all giving me the time. In summary, we've got concerns, major concerns, about the drainage. We have concerns about parking. We have concern about the ADA issues. We have concerns about the, the site coverage, which is excessive. The plan calls for a thirty-foot front buffer. There cannot be a thirty-foot front buffer. That would go into the parking lot. It calls for a buffer at the back. There's not enough space in the back for the type of buffer they're talking about. So I don't know how that works. They can't do what they're proposing to do. We've mentioned the parking. We mentioned the concerns about the incomplete application, which puts us and other people in the public in a position where you have to go down there and look at documents. Then you have to come back and look at documents. Then you have to come to hearings, and it's incomplete. And you have to come to hearings again, it's incomplete. We're still incomplete tonight. And we've set out in the, in our materials to weigh in. This is, yeah, this is, there's no loading zone on this property. No loading zone at all. So what happens when somebody wants to load something at the marketplace or the post office for Mr. Lucas's property? They park in the middle of the driveway because there's no loading zone at all in violation of the zoning ordinance. If you would go to the next slide. This is really our concern. I know you all's responsibilities are not a hundred percent of what happened to Glen County Planning Department. But we really hope that you all won't just pump this down to the permitting stage. Because once you do that, or the VOC, the DOC has that, you all won't have any control of what happens. There's no public oversight. There's no real opportunity for anything to happen. And based on what we've seen, what that means is a permit gets issued, things get done. They may not be correct, but things, things happen. And all of a sudden, it's, it's over with. So I appreciate very much your attention. I'm going to hand you, if I may, just a copy of materials we've already submitted. I'll just include those in the record. And I do appreciate your time.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition of this?
Well, I have a question.
Want a question for him?
Okay.
Sorry, I have a question for you, please.
Yes.
Of the drainage. What you've been discussing is a huge drainage system. And, you know, from the north point, the northern drainage system, which is where people that aren't part of this process actually live over there or other parcels that aren't actually part of what's before us tonight. And all this contributes to issues of drainage in the northern system. I understand that. But what's before us tonight is the expansion of this building, which we are told will have whatever extra water they, they are going to create in drainage issues will be to the southern system. They've also said if that southern system in the permitting stage cannot handle the extra ounces in the eight-ounce glass of water, that they will have to upgrade the system to handle it moving forward. So being that this drainage issue has been for so many years on these individuals in the back, how is it? I mean, I'm having a little difficulty understa, I understand all the engineering. It's, it's a big problem, but it's beyond particularly what we're dealing with here tonight. If they can make that water, the little expansion of the building, if they can make the water that that expansion's going to cause to go forward and go into the southern portion, and they're willing to make that water flow, I'm not, I don't know how then we can address all those other issues because they're not before us.
Well, our, our position would be they're taking away this area here, which now allows water to go into it. This is Lot, this is actually Lot Four. They're taking away that, so there's additional water that's going somewhere.
Some permeable space, you're talking about.
It's not going into the ground anymore.
Right. But given the magnitude of the problems you've expressed us, that's small. It's a minor little piece of property.
It would be, our position, I don't want to be argumentative, but to briefly respond. Our position is the glass is already full.
The Sea Marshes Lot Three is the one in turquoise.
And when this building is built on Lot One, they're going to add here again. And we might as, our position is before this is rezoned and they're permitted to build this building and things get lost in the permitting process, something ought to be done about it because it's causing flooding over here for these people.
And none of that is before us, is what I'm trying to say.
We would contend that it's an appropriate thing because the zoning ordinance says "Dare to address additional drainage needs." And it also says the ITC is to consider and report on impact of its decision on adjacent properties.
Right, okay.
I appreciate it very much.
I'd like to hear some rebuttal, though.
Anyone have a question?
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Brown?
Others in opposition?
I'd like to hear from the engineer for a second.
Somebody else wants to speak in opposition, I think.
Oh, okay. Mr. Rogers, wait, please.
What?
No, I want you.
Can you win in opposition?
Please, stay there.
Well, I know you all know me by now because I've been up here several times. I'm Ken Rogers. My wife and I own Fourteenth Plantation Way. My father-in-law, Olaf Olson in Gloria, own Nine Blackbanks Drive, which is right next door. There's a couple of things that I'd like to bring up that was brought up by Mr. Lucas. And, you know, we've seen a lot of speeches in the last few months from Trump and Rubio and everybody. And I felt like I was that one tonight because although he's happy for the growth, I've still got a problem with drainage. You know, I like the fact that, that he's got new tenants. I like the fact that people are moving here from Atlanta for growth. I love that. I'm a builder developer myself. I love the growth. I love the development. But just do what's right. You can't shed your water onto your neighbor. And that's what this is about. It's real simple. You can get into all these reports all you want, but when it rains really hard, my heart tells me to rush home, put a pump in my father-in-law's garage because he's had appliances ruined, that water has gone up knee-high to me in his garage. My son and I put a pump in there, and we pump it out, and we try to save it. My father-in-law, Mr. Olson, he, he set up appliances now on six-by-sixes because he knows the next time it rains, the six-by-sixes will hopefully protect his freezer that he stores shrimp in, refrigerator that he puts his Heineken beer in. You keep talking about water's going to be shedding north instead of south.
South, certainly.
Whatever. Last time I noticed, when it was raining, it was raining on both sides, north and south. When the water drains, it's fine to think about putting a gutter system on it, but everybody in here's got gutters on their house. And everybody, if they're honest with themselves, the gutters overflow when it's a big, bad rain. Where does the water go then? It goes right back to where we started. The engineer that came over was, I couldn't ask for a nicer guy to come out and talk to me. I mean, I, we got along. But like I told Frank, when you've got a pipe that's so big and it's not handling what we've got, and then you add three thousand square feet, it doesn't take an engineer to figure out that it won't drain the water. He was talking about, he's happy with the growth. He's great, everybody was talking about what a great member of the community Mr. Lucas has become. My father-in-law's been here for ninety years, y'all. He had Olson Jot Yard, built the house forty-six years ago in Blackbanks. He can't get up here and speak for himself, but I can sure speak for him. I don't have quite the problems he does. I'm a little bit west of the problem, more so, but I still get it. I've got a picture of me in a rowboat in my backyard five or six years ago. And then I cleaned the pipe out because the people that were responsible for it at the time didn't maintain it, and I ended up fixing it myself. I agree with the engineer about the gate, putting the gate on the system. But the gutter, you may as well have not wasted your money putting gutter up because it's not going to work. We need to ask who maintains the system. When Blackbanks made the agreement, it was supposed to be maintained. I've never seen it maintained. And I dare anybody to find a report. I've never seen it maintained, and I dare anybody to find a report where it has ever been maintained. Mr. Robertson and I walked back there when we first started this argument, and there was a pipe full of leaves. You tell you it was full of leaves. I don't know if it's been cleaned out yet or not. Nobody's given me that. Other than that, everybody, I'd just like to say, if it was your property, I'd be up here going to bat for you, just like I'm going to bat for myself and my father-in-law. So please consider that, I don't mind the growth, I just want what is done right. Maintain it. Make it large enough to get rid of the water. Filter it for the marsh. But just do what's right. And I thank you for listening.
Mr. Rogers, may I ask a question?
Yes.
In your estimation of the gate that's been proposed, would that help?
I think it would. I really do. Because it's kind of like, on everybody's water system now, the county makes us put a, what it's called, but so water won't back up into your house, it'll only go out.
Check valve.
Check valve, basically. And that's basically what this is. And when there's a spring tide, full moon, hurricane warning, whatever, the water backs up all the way down behind our house, and then just starts coming in like a toilet that's backing up.
Right. So that gate would prevent that spring tide from coming--
I think it would help, yes, sir. But we've also got to consider the volume of the new proposal for the addition and whoever builds in the future.
Right. Well, in those instances that you mentioned where it was--
My house was covered in all my trouble.
Mr. Rogers, in those instances where you mentioned that it was the worst, where you saw the worst, was that, you think, because of the spring tide, or?
No, we had 10 inches of rain.
Okay.
I mean, you know, the pictures that he was showing of Mr. Olsen's garage, if it rains more than two days, my mother-in-law just cries because water's up into her, almost into her house. You know, you got a, you know, Blackbanks is not a little kivvily subdivision. This is a million-dollar house. And my house is right next door to it. They're 90 years old, and, guys, let's just do what's right. That's all I ask. We're a small community.
Mr. Rogers, I do have a question for you. So are you saying that with the addition, it's going to make the situation worse?
Well, like I said, he could correct me, I'm sure, about what I'm fixing to say, but if you've got a 3,000-square-foot roof dumping water into a reinforced pipe, and then you put another 3,000-square-foot onto it, into that same pipe, the pipe's overloaded now. How's it going to take care of what they're adding? It's simple. Just make the pipe bigger. I don't mind the addition. I don't mind the growth. I just want water to stay out of our yard. He's paid for his house. He's maintained his house. I've struggled to keep my house, and I want the value to stay up. With the water under his house, y'all, it's like this deep at times, under the house. His house is on a crawl space. Mine's on a foundation on a monolithic slab. I don't know what it's doing to the foundation underneath there. All you engineers in the room can probably say, it's got to be doing something, because he walked into my mother-in-law's house the other day. She's got a cradle that was brought over here on the Mayflower, and it was covered with mold inside the house, coming up from the bottom of the house.
Mr. Rogers, I am a little confused because of the fact that it seems like the onus is being placed on Mr. Lucas because what's before us is rezoning and an addition. However, from what I hear, from what I'm hearing, is that if we deny him the addition, you will still have a problem with the drainage.
Right.
So therefore, the issue is not just with Mr. Lucas, it's with the other owners as well. Okay.
When they did the market, people in Blackbanks, like, I'm not behind the market. I don't know if y'all are familiar where it is. It was going to be a t-shirt shop or sell sea island clothes, and now they're serving food. Don't have a bathroom for that. There's delivery trucks over there. I'm the one that complained about the buses going behind my house at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock in the morning at 50 miles an hour down the fire lane. We've got delivery, 18-wheelers back there delivering seven days a week to somebody with their doors slamming, and I've been patient with that. Mr. Lucas said he addressed the lighting situation. He didn't address the lighting system. I've addressed the lighting system. You can read a newspaper in my backyard from the lights that come over from the buildings, and nobody's even addressed that. I've been patient with that, but the water situation, y'all, you've seen the pictures. I mean, there's proof of it. I mean, it's 8, 10, 12 inches deep when it rains two days. The water's got to go somewhere. I'm sorry.
You say this has been going on for five or six years?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, what have you been able to, how have you been able to address it at that time?
Pumping it myself because the people that had the problem before that would not address the problem.
Have you not gone to the people that put it--
Yes, ma'am, and nobody would do anything for me. He's new here. I can't blame him for what happened in the past. He's a good neighbor. He's a good landlord for these people, but I just, you know, you're adding problems by adding more roof with more water, with impervious pavements. They're talking about bringing the incline on the wall to a level place, setting trees on top of the drainage pipe. It'll all look pretty, but it just won't work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Daniel Partially, and I'd like to address this complex. And before I start, I wish the best for Mr. Lucas and all his tenants. I have, I hope that they do well. The C Marshals track has a long history, and it appears that the Isle of Commissioners want to separate the time that he purchased this building from the previous history of this property. But I'd like to, if you'd be patient, I'll be brief. I would like to talk a little bit about the previous history of this property. When it was initially, came before the planning commission, they looked at it as a whole. They looked at the drainage as a whole. They looked at the parking as a whole. And then as we've gone over time, and uses as a whole, and as we've gone over time, they've been looking at individual lots, and changes have been done on the individual basis without looking at the project holistically. Right from the beginning, before the building even went up, they expanded the square footage, which resulted in a deficit in parking. And then they changed uses, which addressed, caused additional deficits in parking. And then this one will be the third bite of the apple for another deficit in parking. It appears that the purpose of the zoning text is to permit another deficit in the parking. And as has been mentioned previously, this, the parking situation here has to be looked at holistically. As far as uses, there are, the initial uses had specific parking requirements, and then with the addition of the market and eateries, which have different parking requirements, we've gone to another parking deficit. And as the residents of St. Simon's increasingly look upon the planning commission for leadership and sound decision-making, the breaking of these complexes that were planned as a whole into smaller pieces for changes sort of epitomizes why we're not getting a grip on the problem. I did have some concerns about the staff's evaluation of this project. It appears there'll be about 13 more offices created, and they came to the conclusion that the rezoning will not cause any change in project traffic volumes. As we know, we have a problem on St. Simon's, and a failure to be able to quantify change and how it affects our traffic volumes has obviously been a severe problem on the island that we need to address. And this proposal before you tonight also would allow sales. As we see this complex morph from an office complex into a sales complex, the possibility of the tenants finding more suitable space and the complex being turned into a retail sales complex would further aggravate the parking problem. I ask that the Island Planning Commission defer this proposal so we can look at the project holistically, and that the problems that occurred initially by expanding the square footage back many years ago and not addressing the drainage can be addressed. And because it looks like there's going to have to be some infrastructure improvements before anything's done at this site. Thank you for your indulgence. Good evening.
Mr. Partially.
Yes, sir.
Again, wouldn't you agree that more parking would result in more stormwater runoff?
Uh--
More parking? More hard surface?
I am not advocating for more parking. I'm advocating for better planning.
I understand that, but, I mean, less parking in this particular instance would result in less stormwater runoff, because parking issues have been raised of not adequate parking, that sort of thing. Not adequate parking means more parking to make it adequate.
The parking adequacy has been, a great deal, been influenced by the changes in uses at the property and the initial changes in the square footage of the buildings.
I go to that bank quite often. I bank up there. I go up to that property. I go by the property. My son lives in Blackbanks, so I go by that property all different times of the week and during the day. I've never seen a parking problem in terms of nobody having parking places. So you may have to walk from one building to the next to get to it, but there's nothing that guarantees that you're supposed to have a parking place at the front door.
Right. Well--
I think that we'd have, if less hard surface would be better for the stormwater runoff.
I agree with you, sir, and I don't know if the banks open when the farmer's market's there, but I encourage you to go by and see what the parking situation is.
I went there the other day, so--
And also--
At lunchtime.
Yeah. And also look at the back of the building when they're taking deliveries and how that affects the traffic pattern within the facility. But, you know, I'm just, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, at one time, this was looked at as a project. Now it's being looked at as individual parcels of land, and we've lost the continuity of how the planning process took place on this piece of property. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition of this proposal? Rezoning. Mr. Rogers, would you step up to the podium? No, no, Mr. Rogers, Mr.--
Mr. Roberts.
Roberts, Roberts.
If we were--
Well, Ms. Desperate Watson wanted him to answer a question.
We've got lots of questions with him. Karen?
Thank you for coming back. I would like for you to address the issue of site coverage. It's been mentioned that it's excessive site coverage.
Site coverage was handled by Mr. Bryson. I'll have to get him to answer that topic.
Okay, let's go back to drainage then. It seems, can you, when you take that much space of the new building that's now permeable, that when you put it on there, it's not going to be permeable space, to what percentage would that increase the runoff?
Can we go to the first slide that I had, David?
What I'm saying is that will exacerbate the situation by half a percent, 20%, 5%, 1%.
All that will have to be quantified, but as you can see right now, half of this building goes to that system. Half of it. That's the ridge line. Everything that hits on this side of the property runs off, hits the back, gets into the parking lot, and goes into that system. In the expanded version, we will gutter the entire system. The gutters aren't pretty reliable, and Mr. Lucas has proven that he will maintain his gutter system. It will be piped to this system. So it will reduce water going to the north system. It will. There still will be an amount that runs from the existing hard surface, but that's going there today.
Is that northern line, is that in the green space that we saw?
The northern line's basically right on the curb line.
It's on the curb line, so if they are planting trees, eventually those roots will break into that system.
Well, on the reinforced concrete pipe, not likely. Not likely. And--
Really? Yeah.
Well, and the county will have to look at the planning plan compared to the existing location of that pipe, but reinforced concrete pipe does not get broken by any root system.
Okay, that was a question I had.
Mr. Roberts, I've got a follow-up question about that. Is it possible, you know, we've talked about gutters, and we've heard from Mr. Rogers, is it possible to change that connection basin system in the back of the building to go towards the front?
It's something that we have not studied. I can't answer that off the cuff today, but that's something that has not been studied.
Right. But there is, I mean, a potential that you could take all of that water on that site and take it to the, and take it to the south?
The problem with that is that you can see that the northern system is a much larger area.
Right.
So it doesn't look reasonable to take all of this water from the north and put it--
No, no, no. I'm talking about just, talking about just Lot Number 4.
Just Lot Number 4.
Take it to, take it to the southern--
Well, that's what they're doing with the guttering, right?
Well, that's what they're doing, but I've heard from Mr. Rogers. He's concerned that the gutters may not be adequate. I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I know there's, currently, there is pavement and a portion of that building that does go to that north system, correct?
Correct.
So if we could figure out a way to get it all to the southern system, would that not improve the situation for Mr. Rogers?
It would improve the situation. I would have to let Mr. Lucas make a weigh-in on that, because at a point, the project's not feasible. He has to redo the entire parking lot for the entire Lot 4. That may be a point where he says, "We're not--
No, no, no. I'm not talking about, I'm just talking about all the water from Lot 4 going to the southern system.
Right. Yeah, we would have to study that and see what the implication would be and the potential upgrade on the southern system. I can't answer that question tonight.
Right, but you are talking, right. But that is a possibility. Perhaps.
Okay, now I guess we've got a question for Mr. Bryson.
I would like to hear from Mr. Bryson about the site coverage, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you.
If you look at the sheet, the little bullet point sheet that I handed out earlier, item number one gives the total development area, the pervious, impervious, and total site. The impervious is .91, or 39,000 square feet, which is 66.03 square feet of site coverage.
And Mr. Bryson, this is specifically for Lot 4, is it not?
Lot 4, yes.
Right. And how did you measure that? Did you use the CAD system or something?
We did. Right. Created P-lines around all the impervious area.
And in your estimation, is that fairly accurate?
It is accurate, yes.
How do you get any 6%?
You can get wherever you want.
Yes.
The question, there was a question that was posed about an incomplete application, and this may go to Mr. Hanley. Mr. Hanley, are you aware that the application was incomplete?
I'll defer to Ms. Dagenhart, who's the planner on that.
And Ms. Dagenhart, are you aware that the application was incomplete?
No.
It was complete in your estimation?
It was complete. I don't know if they're referring to, when we received it, we worked with the applicant to make sure everything is on there that needs to be on there as required by the zoning ordinance. And now, we, once we get to that point that it's full and complete, we do the 30-day waiting period before it goes to the planning commission or the Board of Commissioners.
Right. And for the commission, I can speak from experience. Staff has really put the push on all of us architects and engineers to be complete, and I would be surprised if it wasn't.
Thank you.
Buffers, there was a question about buffers. Ms. Dagenhart, could you perhaps explain to us the requirement for buffers on this site?
On this site, I believe, I believe what is being referred to is the setback line and not the buffers. There's a 30-foot setback line on the front of the property. It does go through, probably about halfway through the front parking spaces, but again, that is not the buffer. That is a setback line, and you are permitted to have parking in a setback line.
Right, that's a building setback, not a parking setback.
Correct.
Thank you. For this property, there was a question about loading zones, and specifically for this property, was that addressed for this property? And I may ask the applicant.
I don't believe office commercial requires loading zones, and I know that-- I don't believe office commercial requires loading zones, and I know that, uh, for zones that do require loading, loading, uh, loading spaces, there is a certain size that the, that the building has to be before a loading zone is required. Unfortunately, I don't know that exact number. Right now, we do have it in the ordinance, uh, but again, I don't believe that's for, uh, that's for the OC zone. I can't address anything that was done on Sea Marchus Track Three when it was rezoned, I don't know anything about that one.
Right, well, that, we're, we're specifically talking about lot four, this is a PD text, was there anything in the PD text that required a loading zone?
No, sir.
I have a question, but wouldn't the question be, um, once the use was changed, after it was approved, because it initially was to be a shop, just for T-shirts and so forth, and then it was changed to where they have, um, for lot three?
That's lot three.
Yeah, that's lot three.
So, okay, we, we were talking about the loading, loading zone, for which, ultimately for lot three?
I, I was, I was specifically referring to the requirements for lot four, what's required from Mr. Lucas's property, and, uh, I think Mrs. Dagenhart said that...
He wouldn't have any loading right there, because he's, it's office space, right?
Right, I, I wouldn't expect that any, except if a tenant was, was, was moving, and, uh, and which would be very rare, occasional, an occasional thing, not a daily thing.
What they're pointing out is the problem when they started dividing these four lots and making separate uses, it, uh, they complicated a whole...
I understand, but we're dealing with Mr. Lucas's property denying.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition of this, um, proposed rezoning? Anyone questions for, commissioners have any questions for anyone? The applicant, opposition, Mr. Bryon, anyone? Um, Mr. Humphries wanted to address the commission.
Well, then, shall we have a motion or something, or?
Well, sure.
I'll, I'll speak now, if, if you want me to, but, uh, Mr. Lucas was very eloquent in his talk, and I certainly admire his entrepreneurial spirit, and I have great sympathy as my career's been spent in business, and that, uh, I, I admire what he's done on, on, on this kind of thing. But, having said that, I will, I will vote against this proposal, in part because of concerns with the parking and the drainage and the possible adverse effect on the, uh, existing use of adjacent properties. Primarily, I objected to continued abuse of the planned development process by the county and the development community, in this instance, and many, many other similar distortions of zoning ordinance. The development process in William County has been conducted so long, for so long, that some now consider it right. It just seems that's the way things are done in Glen County. It's time for this to be stopped, starting here and now. Thank you.
Anyone like to make a motion on, excuse me, on ZM 3126?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Board of Commissioners' approval of rezoning application ZM 3126 is submitted.
Um, what's the storage?
With, with the storage removed from the text.
I'll second.
A discussion? Uh, I, I would like to see perhaps a little, some stronger language added, added to that, and I'm willing to, I'm willing to make a, um, an amendment to the motion if need be, but I would like you to hear what I have to say first. Um, and I think, it, it seems that, that I understand Mr. and Mr. Rogers' problem, and, uh, and I understand that Mr. Lucas is, is, has agreed to help solve that problem. Um, uh, gutters, I'm not so sure is going to be a great solution. I'm not sure it would help tremendously for what, for what Mr. Rogers is looking for, but I do think there is a way to make sure that Mr. Lucas's property does not have any influence on Mr. Rogers' property. Now, the rest of the property, lots one, two, and three, I, I don't think we should impose his problem, those problems on Mr. Lucas. But I would like to see Mr. Roberts, uh, of course, take, take a look at what we talked about, and figure out a way to get all of Mr. Lucas's drainage towards the front of his site, and, uh, I think, I think that'll go a long way to, to, to solving some of Mr. Rogers' problem.
Magnetic condition?
And I would like Mr. Lucas, if, to, to tell me whether or not that he thinks that's a reasonable request.
I don't know what the cost could be, based on what you're designing. It gets too expensive, you can't do the project.
Right.
But if it's something that we, you know, I'll have to have a professional engineer tell me how to do it, and if it's something we can do that's, that's a reasonable cost, we'll certainly do it. But I just don't have the information right now to know what that is.
Right, well, what's in jeopardy, of course, Mr. Lucas, is, is if we make that motion, and it's agreed on by everyone, then if you can't do it, you can't do the project.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Willis says...
I would, I would rather give them the opportunity to look at it and not tie their hands to it. I mean, I think Mr. Lucas is a normal person, and has done probably more than any developer I'm aware of, of trying to alleviate some issues, and, um, you know, I mean, I look at it as the fact that they're taking all the water on the half of the building now and taking it to the front, and, um, so...
But I think, I think in this particular, I think in this particular case, because of, and, and I agree that, that we're talking about original sin here, right? It was, it was done before Mr. Lucas, but unfortunately, uh, he's going to have to be part in the solution, and, uh, because he is now part of that whole neighborhood there, and, uh, he's, he said he could step forward. I would like to see him step forward and see if he could solve that problem.
Well, if...
At least for lot four.
Well, in, in my opinion, if that's the case, and I would have to ask Mr. Lucas about this, then I would move to defer it for one more month, to see if something can be worked out, and at that time, make the decision.
Yeah, yeah.
Can he and I discuss it privately for three minutes, and I can figure out about what the asphalt's going to cost to redo the entire northern half of the property, and I've got those numbers, and I can, I can give him some very rough numbers of what it would take to redo all of his asphalt, which is what it would take on the north half of his building.
You'll skip it.
Yeah, I'll give you three minutes.
May I?
Five-minute break.
Before we manage this back to you, because it's on their agenda for Thursday night...
Okay, so they're about, they're taking three minutes, and then we're going to make a decision.
We take a break?
Yeah, take a five-minute break.
What the heck?
Well, Karen, you have to say we're taking a break.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Push, push a little bit further.
We're taking a five-minute break, five-minute break.
Workload.
I've been annoyed by that a long time.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't be five minutes.
Five minutes slow.
All right, good.
I mean, I think less parking is better.
I don't think this...
It's like Mr. Lucas, he's up to the microphone, I'm going to hear...
Hi, and welcome to Golden Isles TV. Today, we are on Sea Island talking about the tour of homes. There are so many beautiful homes on the tour this year, and today...[1139.52]